Calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order 7:01 PM on Tuesday, September 8. Looks like we have all the Selectmen on tonight. That's good. We're starting the meeting with a public hearing. And I believe we have everybody on that's for the public hearing, Brian and Matthew. So, I'm going to open up the public hearing pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 13, to consider a Board of Selectmen license for underground propane tank storage as part of the Millville Elementary School Boiler Project, 122 Berwick Way.
Yes, I-
Point of order, you just, we just need to vote to open it. So I move in the motion of the Chair to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. We have Brian LaRoche, and I saw Matthew Aronworth on here as well. Oh, there he is. They're going to speak to this public hearing notification and present to us tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Brian LaRoche and the owner's project manager for the Millville Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project. In conjunction with the replacing of the boilers in the school, we're replacing the heating fuel from oil to propane. So we've asked for consideration of an application for license to store liquefied propane at the school. The tank will be a single tank, it'll be 18,000 gallon underground storage tank. It will be buried in the approximate area of the pre-existing oil tank. And so this license that we're requesting is for the storage of the fuel. The Fire Department Chief Landry has signed off on the project and has reviewed the project. The, I'm not sure, there's not much more to say about sort of the tank and the approvals. I mean, we had been through building permit. We've been told that we have to get the license before we can fill the tanks, so that's part of why we're here. The project is nearing its completion on the inside to replace the boilers. The tank itself is on site, it's not in the ground. We had a couple of changes that needed to be made to the anchoring system for the tank itself, which are being worked on the end of this week into next. The date for the tank to go into the hole, hopefully all goes well tonight, will be on the 15th of September. That's the new date that we have.
And we can check with Jennifer. We did send out notification to the abutters. Did you receive that notification? Just to confirm.
So I didn't, but I do have get notices in the mailbox, and we don't, we both work full-time. We don't always make it to the post office, so it's probably at the post office. I wasn't worried about it because I was at the last meeting. And knew about this public hearing, so.
Yeah, they have to be sent, I think they have to be sent certified mail, correct? So if there's, if there's nobody there, then they, they'll leave that note. So that's probably what happens.
So I have all the return, the receipts for all the notifications to abutters. So I do have all that documentation. It was done the next day after the previous hearing.
Mine's probably at the post office, so that's where it is.
The application has all the required signatures on it at this point in time, being the chief and anyone else that's supposed to be signing this application, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The chief has signed off today. Matt Aronworth is signing on behalf of the school district.
If there's no other questions from the board, I'd like to open it up to public hearing. Anybody in the audience that would like to ask questions or speak?
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
As an abutter. So I just want to confirm, the tank will be buried, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the intention also is to put a grass area over where the tank is, so that it's not going to be in a spot where there's, like, not that there can't be traffic going over it. It's certainly secure enough, but the idea is to make that a grassed area so that the kids can actually use it for recess time.
Anything else from the board before we open it up to the public? I noticed we also have a building inspector on. Is there any comment from the building inspector?
In regards to what?
Just the application or anything? Was there anything that had concerns to you?
Well, I haven't seen the application.
Okay.
I'm puzzled as to why we had to get down to the 11th hour. The public didn't have the opportunity to participate in this whole process a little more than at the last minute, but the licensing is the Board of Selectmen's issue. It's got nothing to do with the Building Department.
So Tim, you can open it up to the public, if anybody's in the audience that has questions regarding this project?
All right, I did let them know a few minutes ago, so we can wait another minute if you want.
Sure.
And this was posted, the public hearing was posted in some newspapers, correct?
Yeah, the Telegram and Gazette. It was done two weeks ago.
Is that the one we usually do for public hearings? As I remember, it was the one socket call that we usually use, so.
Yeah, we, we did try to get it in the call. I had about 30 emails between them and phone calls. We just weren't able to get anywhere with them. They were, I'm not sure what the issue was, but we did attempt to get it in there as well. But the Telegram Gazette has a distribution area of Millville.
Looks like we have somebody that would like to speak that's on, Tim. I don't know if you can see the everyone messages there. We have somebody on.
I don't think, I don't think the person is for this topic. This topic is for the public hearing, for the underground propane tank.
Right. Yeah, you're right about that.
So.
I do just want to specify, so I was a bit puzzled by Lincoln's comment regarding the public information going out. And I know that when we were commissioning this project, we presented all of the information regarding what was, what was going to be happening, the designs, the options, that the tank was going to be buried. I'm not sure if there was some other public information along the way for, during the process that was concerning, but I, I can speak on behalf of the district that we certainly have tried to provide as much communication to the public as possible and make sure that we were in alignment with all of the regulations and that everyone knew what was happening, including the funding of the project. Because I know that I went and spoke on behalf of the project and had that conversation at the town meeting some time ago. I just want to clarify that for, on the district's behalf.
So if I could, I'll just speak on behalf of Lincoln a little bit, if I may. I think the town, you know, at this 11th hour, as he put it, is a correct way of describing in terms of the application coming forward. And I think, Matt, we communicated, I think you've been very helpful in getting this done in spite of the 11th hour, and so that's great. Here we are.
Speaking specifically to the license, I-
Yes.
Understood.
I'll also speak to, you know, just the fact that it was a joint discovery by the town as well as your tank installer, the need for substantial changes to what was being designed, specified, and actually put into the ground to hold the tank down. So this is a very, in my view, a fairly significant issue that even now has yet to be completed. So I, I know that we, that it will be completed, but I think that, you know, I'm just doing a few at this stage because, you know, that, that thing's pretty large. If anybody's seen that small submarine, and you have high groundwater up there, it needed to have the right level of anchors, which thankfully now we have planned to be installed, I guess, by, by the time you actually put the tank in the ground. So that's good. So I, I think that's just to say that, you know, I think we'll learn from this on the next project. Let's hope. So, I'm upset.
I don't think there's anybody in the audience that has questions. We've given them several minutes here regarding the public hearing at this point in time.
Can I clarify my comments, please?
Sure.
I was referring directly to the fact that at the last hour, it was decided to go with a single tank. The single tank holds 18,000 gallons of fuel. It's 40 feet long and nine feet in diameter, and it's being installed 13 feet from the cafeteria. I think that if that kind of information had been disseminated and discussed with the public, some of the parents might have become more involved and asked some questions and said, "Hey, is there another option? Could we get this thing a little further away? Make us feel a little better about the decision that's been made." That has nothing to do with my position as a building inspector. That's as a parent and resident of the community. So that's what I was addressing.
Lincoln, this is Brian LaRoche, if I may. You know, we presented two options to the school committee. Neither was burying the tank next to the school. It was the school committee that asked for it to be there. This was not something that we had proposed. We were, we're following the wishes of the school committee.
I'm not, I'm not pointing a finger at anyone, sir. I'm just saying that's where my concern was, and I, I was disappointed that the public didn't get that information shared with them well ahead of the time and give them a chance to chime in.
To your point, I'm sorry.
Erica, can I, is it okay if I-
Yes, go ahead, Jane.
Yeah, so at the town meeting, we actually did have that discussion because it was somebody at the town who suggested when we pull out the oil tank, why don't we put the propane? And so at that, it was at that time that we asked Ryan and the team if that was even or not. Like, we didn't even, hadn't considered that, hadn't thought of it as an option, but it was, you know, the idea of, you know, if the hole's already there, why are we having the expense to dig another hole? And why can't we put one tank where another tank was? And, and, you know, the school committee's not the expert on, on those things, but I think where we were going with that is let's explore all of the options and see what's reasonable, what's feasible, and what's economical, because all of those things matter.
Absolutely. To Jane's point, I do, I recall when we went to the, to the Board of Selectmen and the building, when we were discussing the project, that that was exactly the conversation. We were trying to make sure that we were not digging another hole somewhere else because of the amounts of ledge that are there, and we're trying to make use of what was already there so that we could limit the expenses to the town. And that's, that's where it was deemed that we would put the tank in the same position that the oil tank was that we removed. But I think we're definitely well past those planning phases, anyway. The good news is that the project has been moving along, and as Brian said, the, the interior work, I will say, I don't know if he mentioned, the interior work is, is really moving forward. Everything is just about ready to, to start, and we're waiting to make sure that we can fill the tank with this committee's permission, and then we will move forward and hopefully have everything completed shortly after the very beginning of school and certainly long before we need to go into the heating season.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on this topic? So tonight, you're seeking a license for underground propane tank to be installed at the school?
Yes.
So that tank, that tank should be installed next week, is that correct? If you get the license tonight, and then is there, is there another license or another application, I think, before propane comes on premises? Is this okaying it?
The issuance of the actual license. So this is the application, and then from that, there's a signature on, on the actual license, and then that gets recorded within the town.
Okay, so this is basically a one-step process, then?
Yep.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
So when you make the motion, it's one signature that's required. So the board's approving someone to sign it on behalf of the town. Could be the Chair, or it could be, you could even authorize me to sign it. I'll be in there tomorrow. So if that helps you.
I'm around tomorrow. It doesn't matter either way for me, Peter.
However you want to do it.
So who would you like me to make the motion to sign, to approve the license and to sign?
You can make, make Peter the motion, just in case comes the one I'm not there, but.
Okay. So I'll make the motion that we approve the license to install a propane tank in the school and fill it with fuel, and I will also add that Peter Crusoe is authorized to sign that license.
Looking for a second. I will second that.
I'll second it.
I did it before you, Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Andrew, did you vote?
Yep, I said aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you. So I have 5-0. Okay, the license will be granted, and Peter Crusoe will sign for that.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:17 PM. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Jen. We're back into our regular meeting now. And announcements. Peter, do you have any announcements on your side?
No, I do not.
Okay. Next item, meeting minutes from August 17th. Did everybody have a chance to read those? I know we had a lot of reading to do tonight, for tonight, so did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
There's an error on the first page, actually. So they got the right vice chair on the last page, but not on the first page.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion with your edit?
Yes, so if we could just edit the, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the correction of naming Jennifer Gill as vice chair.
Looking for a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll sign those meeting minutes and deliver them to Town Hall. Correspondence, we have a couple of correspondence to talk about, yeah? With the green energy grant announcement?
Right.
Do you have that on your side now?
So I have that in front of me. So the town was granted from the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division. They were approved $122,403 for basically five projects. Approximately $27,000 for a boiler replacement, fuel conversion in the Fire Department. $1,000 bucks for weatherization at the Fire Department. $10,000 for LED lighting at the police station. $78,000 for LED lighting at Millville Elementary School. And $6,500 bucks for administrative assistance to manage the grant and so forth. And we use, you know, some outside help to do that. That was part of the grant. So the person that put the grant, yeah, from CMR PC.
Good news.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you for everybody that worked on that and getting that grant in. Much appreciated.
Yeah, so that would be Trish, and the chief really worked hard on that. I helped a little bit, but they were really the ones that spearheaded this. And we've been able to twist the arm of Trish, that you'll see later in the agenda, to re-up on the Green Community Committee, which is great.
Thank you, Trish and chief, and anybody else that assisted them.
Yep, they did a great job.
Thank you. Next item on the correspondence is a letter from the American Legion Post 411.
Right, so this came in, it was addressed to the, you know, request to the board. It was addressed to the Board of Selectmen myself. Those two points. One main point that's of most interest is the American Legion wants to begin discussions regarding the potential purchase of the Legion by the town from the Post 411. Now, they also had a question about some rent payments, but we took care of that.
Okay.
So I reached out back to Jeffrey Wing, who sent this letter. Have not heard back from him, but I look forward to having those discussions.
Brian, how you doing?
Where they may lead.
I froze, I froze up a little bit, and I missed why they continued us. So I came back and read in as the woman was saying, if I could continue it. So we got to talk to you.
Greg, we can all hear you, just FYI.
It was going along fine. I mean, they were, they basically were willing to-
I'm glad, it's great.
All right, Peter, are you waiting to hear back from Jeffrey before we get him on a schedule to come to a meeting, or did he want to meet with one of you?
I want to hear what he has to say, at least begin the exploration and see where that goes. You know, an exciting opportunity to have conversations about this topic. I know that it's always been on the table as a potential topic of discussion, so I look forward to it. I think it's, you know, a good opportunity for all involved, if you can do that.
Definitely. So will this be on the agenda for the next meeting to have more detail? Or are we going to, are you going to meet with him first and do some report?
I don't know how. He's sometimes difficult to communicate with, so you'll, I'll certainly update you in my town administrator, you know, report if nothing else. If I've reached out to him, I'll reach out again.
Oh, Pete, I, I saw Jeff today, and he was waiting to see, you know, the correspondence on this meeting, and I'm sure that he will be in touch soon.
I look forward to it.
Very good.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next, Department Board of Health. I don't think anybody's on here from the Board of Health to give any updates.
No, and all I can say is that there were two more reported cases in Millville, so we're up to 41. I think only two remain inactive, the most recent ones. I can't tell you much more about them. But we still, they still show up every, every week or so. We reported as having talked about it.
So you said we're at 41 reported last you heard?
That's correct.
And again, the Board of Health meets on Wednesday nights, if anybody's interested in-
Yeah, I think they meet every other Wednesday, so you have to watch the town meeting, you know, the town website for the calendar there.
Okay, good. All right, do you have any new business for tonight?
No.
Moving on to old business. Appointment considerations, general discussion regarding the posting of building inspector role. I know Selectmen Gill wanted to talk about this a bit.
Yes. So first, I just want to say there is someone who's viewing, who wanted to be promoted to speak in executive session or when the appropriate time is. So I get, her name's in the chat, Tim, so I don't know if you want to, if you can promote her to be one of us, or what the right path forward there is. But, so looking through the roles that we have in town, the building inspector is one of the highest-paid roles. And I'm not sure where our process, it seems like the process around roles is perhaps not as well-defined as it could be, and this is not exclusive to the building inspector role, just roles generally. So I think that for roles that have a lot of visibility, are higher compensated for the town and are very instrumental in terms of getting new businesses to town, helping the townspeople make improvements to their homes, or even other roles that are really in contact with the townspeople often, we might want to consider posting those roles. And in particular, I'm asking to post the building inspector role to see what kind of talents that we can attract, and also to ensure that we have the best and most qualified person in those roles. And in this case, the building inspector role.
Peter, did we get feedback, or did we ask, I know we asked town council a couple of questions around this topic. Did we get feedback about posting? I don't recall seeing anything about that. Are there any rules around that? I'm not sure.
No, I got no feedback, nor do I think there are really any specific rules. It sounds more like what Selectmen Gill's talking about is more policy. Do you want to, you know, periodically post certain roles that you might have identified to see what is out there, what the ramification of that might be, is what I'm referring to.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Yeah. I think it would probably, if we're going to go that route, just my personal opinion is probably before every appointment period, post all the roles, because you don't know. And then on the website, if we're going to do the posting, I guess it could hurt, but something to discuss next year, I guess, on that.
Yeah, yeah, it would certainly validate and let the townspeople know that we have the, out of the pool that was available and the pool that was interested, we have the best person in this role. And I think that's what people are really hoping to see.
Yeah.
So can we make a, I would like to make a motion to post this role. Wouldn't we wait until we actually know what we're doing with the current person before we post anything? I think, I think it's sending a message that we're, we're not listening to our current employee or the things that will come before in the next agenda item. I mean, this is literally putting the cart before the horse. Yep, so the reason why, again, regardless of what happens in the next session, I think we want to ensure that we have the best person in the role. And as we haven't posted or solicited any applications, we don't know that. We just have the person who was in the role before is interested in being in the role again. I think that we afforded everyone else on that list the procedure which was followed in the past. And I, I think, you know, with a great change, and I didn't even know that. I see it on the agenda item, but I, I don't know the discussion, so I really, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. Quick sound effect is good. I don't know, anyone, I don't know if anyone else has any comments. That's my opinion, I think, that we shouldn't post.
So would we be- Say something? Am I allowed to say something? Not just yet. Not just yet, because we need to speak to Lincoln before we decide if it's going to be a public forum or an executive session, so. So I think it does make sense to have the discussion and circle back to this. I mean, you can always make the motion after, as well.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
One quick question?
Yep.
Would it be just this position, or would it be all positions, or certain high, high-level positions?
That's why, that's why I mentioned, I would, I would like to do all positions. When, you know, when we send out the letter saying, "You're in this role now. Do you want to be reappointed?" Maybe at that point in time, we should post all positions, as opposed to picking and choosing. But I think we need to discuss that further.
So as the sort of the immediate supervisor of a number of these appointed positions, I would ask that you, you know, prepare for this and put it on as a future agenda item for where you would take action, or at least consider doing that. I think there are, you know, positive outcomes of doing something like Selectmen Gill's describing, but I also think there are many other outcomes that might not be so positive. You know, the uncertainty, the inability to perhaps attract people to come to something that every year comes up for grabs, you know, that sort of stuff. And I'm just speaking off the top of my head, without having given this any thought. So that's why I say, having it on a future agenda.
Right.
It is a serious matter. I would ask that you-
Okay.
I just think we don't pick and choose. I think that, I absolutely agree, we need some better procedures in place, and I think maybe a procedure that we can discuss further and more broadly, and possibly post them all. Makes sense.
Yep. And then, and I just wanted to call, Andrew said, like, would we post everyone's position? We've appointed everyone for the next year or three years, depending on how it was, except for two positions. So we really could only post two.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, procedurally, for a whole, wouldn't occur until next year.
Right. We can post two right now, though, but we couldn't post everyone. But I, Erica, I think that's a great idea to kind of look at maybe posting all of them or kind of rotating in and out, like the ones that we're going to post based on salary requirement or other requirements that we- salary requirement or other requirements that we as a board outline, so that we're not trying to fill 40 positions or however we, we appoint every year. We can kind of rotate them in and out to make sure that, again, just the best people are in these positions that we can get in Millville. That's all I'm asking.
Right, and I definitely think it's a bigger discussion and we need to spend time on it and probably more than a couple of minutes.
Yeah. So then I know September is very busy with the October 3 town meeting. Could we put this on for maybe October, one of the regularly scheduled meetings?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think it will be longer. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Any more item, any more discussion on this point?
Not for me. Thank you.
Okay, so we have an executive session listed here, but I just want to open it up to Lincoln. Lincoln, obviously, you know, you can have this an executive session or public forum. If we go into executive session, I'm not going to pick and choose who can come into executive session. It will just be you, Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, and if you have Town Council, if you have Council with you. So that is up to you, Lincoln, what you want to do, if you want to go executive session or public forum.
I welcome a public forum.
Okay. So we don't have to read through our executive session?
Can I ask a few questions, please?
Sure.
What's the format of the public forum? What issues will we be addressing?
So we would bring forth all the material that was in the packet, and I believe you've got a copy of it.
Yes.
And we'll talk through what Selectmen have heard, what your opinion is on these matters, and anybody that wants to speak on this matter from the public may speak on this matter if we stay in public forum.
No, you know.
Barry, Lincoln, if I could, just for clarity, it's not a public forum per se, you're an open session.
Open session.
Discuss, you know, the Chair manages the tempo of the meeting, the identification of people who can speak and so forth. That's all on what the Chair can do. So you're really, it's just a, it's an open session, Lincoln, not a, not necessarily a public forum. And the matter on the agenda is complaints against the Building Commission. So that's.
I thought the matter on the agenda, sir, was the appointment of, or reappointment of the building official.
No, so the executive session, which you've chosen to do in public forum or in, excuse me, in open session is to address complaints against the Building Commissioner. That's followed then by consideration of reappointment after the board has, and you have gone through that. So that's, I'm just trying to keep, you know, the legal legalese clear as best we can.
Well, I was more than happy to do this in, in public session, but I am not going to get involved in a he said, she said discussion with members of the public signing on to participate. I, I'm not gonna get involved in that at all. There was a packet that was sent out. I'd be happy to address those specific issues as they were outlined with the Board of Selectmen. If you want to get into an open forum or let the, the board choose who can and cannot participate from the public, I don't think that's a fair procedure and I don't wish to be involved in that.
Well, that's why I said if we go into executive session, I'm not gonna pick and choose who comes into the executive session. It will just be the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, yourself, and Council if you have one with you.
I understand what executive session is. I think the public needs to hear what's going on here. I don't want to hide anything, but I didn't have any time to prepare for this proceeding. I get handed a packet on Thursday. This agenda that's been focused towards me has been going on for months and I, I'm not going to open myself up to any more damage by unverified, unvetted complaints at the last moment that are out of the control of, of you as, as you select people to speak and myself having no advanced knowledge of what's being done.
As I said, it's up to you.
Well.
Want to go into executive session?
I apologize to the people that I asked to participate. This is not my understanding of what was going to happen, so I will be happy to address what was handed to me in a packet and we'll see where it goes from there.
So you want to go into executive session, correct?
Yes, please.
Erica, just a point of order. I know it says Council, but he also can has a person represent him within there. So he could ask someone to come in, but they would not be able to speak, but they could be able to take notes. They could be able to do that for him because he'll be in the moment. And I believe exec, it does allow for Council or, you know, one additional person.
That's right. Who can advise him but cannot speak on the matter.
They cannot speak in for or against him, but they could advise him or they could take notes for him so that things are, you know, because it's, it's, it can be overwhelming and personal, so that's always an option.
And I, I agree and I understand that. I just wanted to make it very clear that we're not letting in people from one side and not the other and picking and choosing who comes into executive session.
Right.
Oh, the executive session is, is the board, the administrator, and the individual who's being accused in this instance.
Lincoln, you can have one person come in with you just to take notes or to, you know, advise you or they can't speak one way or the other, but they could come in with you.
That's true.
I don't have anyone with me. I know that the people I asked to speak on my behalf tonight have other things on their agenda and won't be able to stay for the whole meeting, so I'm not gonna ask. I'm a big boy. I can stick up for myself.
Okay. So would anybody like to make the motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session pursuant to purpose one, General Law, Section C 30A, Section 2181, to discuss complaints brought against a public officer.
Okay, looking for a second.
Second.
Roll. Aye.
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 So we'll go into executive session. We'll only return to open session once we're done with executive session. We're back in open session? Okay.
Sign off here, so I'm gonna disappear from the radar, but I will follow on the other computer.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're on to our next item. Now we're down to old business to be consideration of reappointment. I believe that's in reference to Building Inspector reappointment specifically.
You're not back on the computer yet. All right, now you are.
All right, so Peter, is it one or, let's, I make a motion to appoint Lincoln Barber to Building Inspector through June 30, 2021. Building Commissioner.
Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one on. All right, so he will be reappointed as stated. Okay, next item, conduct discussion performance matters of Town Treasurer, elector, and consideration of reappointment. Think, is Lisa on?
Yes, so Lisa's on, right? I'm sure she'll.
Can you unmute Lisa? Yeah.
I think she's, Lisa, if you're on the phone, you have to press, oh, there she is. Can you hear us, Lisa? Lisa, can, Lisa can hear us? I don't know, maybe she put her phone on mute.
Maybe she fell asleep. It is late.
She unmuted.
She did.
Did she unmute or did you unmute her, Tim?
I asked to unmute her. She was muted, but there is a thing where if you're on a telephone, you have to press star six to unmute, unmute yourself.
Okay.
So if she can hear us, she should be hitting star six?
Well, her microphone's on now. I'm just wondering if she put her telephone itself on mute.
Oh, maybe she walked away.
So I'm gonna move on to the next item and once Lisa can get back on, we'll re-circle back to her.
Sounds good.
Her line just because of the time here, so. Everybody's okay with that. We'll go on to the other appointments and reappointments. We have here a couple of them. Veteran Service Officer, Jean Turcot. Peter, you have interest from this person.
Todd Trotier is, has been hanging in there for the town as a Veterans Officer. He was connected with Mr. Turcot, Jean Turcot, who lives in Uxbridge. He's a veteran. And he's worked as actually in secretarial role supporting military leadership. He's retired now and he's had experience in Veterans Benefits, including medical benefits and so forth. I've spoken to him. He understands it's, you know, an unpaid position. He's ready, willing, and able. I think he's highly qualified and we're fortunate to have him. So I would urge you to appoint him this evening. We'll get him going. He does also have relationships with the gentleman in Uxbridge, Carl, who has helped Todd get up to speed. And Todd will also in doubt be able to help him get up to speed as well.
Okay, have we gotten a, have we gotten a letter of resignation from Mr. Trotier?
So Todd hasn't officially, like, so I have emails from Todd saying he's resigned, but he's gonna wait until the appointment's made. So it's, you know, the appointment will supersede Todd, I guess is the limit.
I think we need a.
Yeah, we definitely need a lizard.
Yeah.
I don't think Todd understands how it works.
Yeah, so we'll need to get a letter of resignation from Todd with the date and then we make the date.
Yeah, okay, I have emails that are, you know, he would resign. He's staying, he's in holdover position.
Okay.
As a Veterans Officer until he's been reappointed.
Yeah, on the list of appointed positions, he was declined. So I don't know that we reappointed him.
No, he's, he's remained in holdover. He was not reappointed. And he's been willing to remain basically through, you know, into September.
He's on the declined reappointment list.
Right.
So I don't think that we ready to appoint him.
So he wasn't officially reappointed, so we can, okay.
He's just holdover, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Tim. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to appoint Jean Turcot effective immediately through the end date?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jean Turcot through June 30, 2021, as the Veteran Service Officer in Millville.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Jean, for stepping up. Perfect. Next one, we have Green Community Committee reappointment.
Right, so Trish initially declined appointment. She's remained in holdover status, but she has rethought that given that we've gotten the Green Community grant, and so she's willing to be reappointed, and so I'm asking you to do that.
All right, let's hurry up and appoint her before she changed her mind. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Trish Benoit Rudin to the Green Community Committee, Green Community Committee through June 30, 2021.
Looking for a second? All second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. We only have one member on the Green Community Committee, correct, at this point?
That's correct.
Yeah, so they can't really even meet, she can't meet.
No, so really, but she can act as on behalf of the committee, the paperwork and so forth. And the Chief and I sit with her on decision making and so forth. We would like more members there, though.
All right, were there any other appointments?
No, so I, I have word indirectly that Lisa can hear you. She just can't speak. She's on her laptop. For some reason, the voice isn't coming through, but she can hear the meeting.
Well, I think it's important she able to speak, though, so we, we maybe want to get her on our next meeting.
For the next time?
I think that's best, yeah, she should be able to speak. So.
So if she doesn't come on before the meeting ends, then we'll put her on the next agenda.
Yep.
I'm gonna try to get her, like, the phone number and everything so she can call in, because I think she's on Zoom remotely. So, so we just can't hear her that way.
All right. All right, fall town meeting planning, consideration of potential warrant articles.
So next, so you've seen the draft warrant that I, I sent you, the latest one, because I had additional information to include the public roads, the Hurto Road and that development. There's Rondo Road, and I forget off the top of my head the other road. There's three roads. That draft warrant is with Brian Riley. I think you need to set another meeting, say next Monday, to finalize the warrant and approve the warrant for distribution and posting. You see that the items are the typical prior year bills. There may be one prior year bill now that I'm learning of related to stormwater. There may be some fiscal 21 budget adjustments. There's the capital item, Highway Backhoe. There's the BMR Regional Agreement Amendment. There's the Senior Tax Workoff Program. There's stabilization, OPEP transfers, including a separate warrant article specifically requested by the Finance Committee to refund, if you will, the General Stabilization Fund for the monies that were used to reimburse the purchaser of the Crater Street. Though even if they put nothing in General Stabilization, otherwise, they want to ensure that is specifically addressed at the special town meeting. So those are the warrant articles. There's, I think it's up to 14 or 15 at this point. I have to work at my screen. So if you have any questions on those, again, I'd say you would finalize for posting, approval and posting next week. What you will see at that meeting is, you know, Council review, wordsmithing. Also, the Planning Board is holding a public hearing this Friday for the road acceptance, so what, what's in there is placeholder articles.
Okay. Yeah, I think next week we're definitely going to have to schedule a meeting to close the warrant and talk through any items. Peter's there, so we should probably do it at the beginning of the week, because I think.
Yeah, so Monday or Tuesday. I think you can get away with Tuesday if you need to, but Monday ideally.
Yeah, because I know FinCom has already scheduled some stuff as well.
That's right.
So at the end of this meeting, we'll, we'll pick a date for next week.
Okay.
Peter, Jennifer Wang, is there any item not, that was, that was removed from the annual that's not on here?
No.
I don't think so either.
I'll double-check it. I'll trust you, but I'll double-check it.
Yeah, I can't... I don't think so. I think I carried over everything. Yep.
I just want to make sure if we put something on hold, that we're at least having a discussion about it. I mean, it doesn't mean we'll put it on, but at least we know that we'll address it all.
So the new stuff would be actually any budget adjustments. So those would be adjustments to already appropriated and approved at the annual town meeting, department budget line items. Or items that will include... we'll see something for the 2% raises for various departments, and that's in process of being quantified. We might see something on stormwater and other highway needs. I spoke to Brian today to come up with what he really needs. I don't know that you'll see anything else right yet, but we'll have that. And Finance Committee will be meeting a week from tomorrow on those items. So, and you'll know by next week what those items are.
Is there anybody on the board here not familiar with any of the articles listed here? Do we need further explanation from the article being... by whom the article is being put forth? I'm comfortable with these articles. I think I have enough information to make a decision. But if there's any items on here, anybody wants further information, we should probably decide that tonight, so we can invite anybody to the meeting next week.
So the only other thing is I know that Blackstone was going to be voting or determining tonight whether or not they were actually going to have a fall town meeting.
Yeah, so that will... yeah, well, by next week, we'll know if they're having one or not. They vote tonight, so then BMR will either redact their article from us, or we'll put it forth and see what goes.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we'll pick a date for next week at the end of this meeting for warrant closing. Next item, consideration of CARES Act funding request from BMR and BBT.
Right, so in your package, you saw the request from BBT for $8,500 bucks for some remote computer equipment. And separately, you see a request for approximately $25,000 from BMR for paying for these additional interim or part-time teachers, I guess I'd call them, that they anticipate needing for the first 90 days of school. And so their request, the full cost of that is about $100,000, and their request is in line with our assessment percentage.
And it looked like the $8,500 from BBT was relatively... was based on our population there and the percentages they were getting from other towns?
That's correct.
Did we actually see the breakdown from the other towns?
No, the, you know, Superintendent Fitzpatrick, he said that it was a... I think they were using 3% of the individual towns' assessment was the guideline they used for what they were requesting. Do I know that all towns have done it or not? No, I don't think so.
So they may have gone above, or they may have gone below?
That's great. Some towns may have decided not to do any. I don't know that there's, you know, a dozen other towns.
Okay.
But if that's important, you know, that's something we can sort of follow up.
It's fine. It's fine.
Reasonable. It's... you know, both of these requests are reasonable. We have funds available. They do appear to qualify for CARES Act funding. So I see, you know, I would recommend that you consider this carefully and thoughtfully.
Do we want to take a vote on this tonight, or do we want to bring it back to our next meeting? I mean, I'm comfortable with these numbers, I mean, considering what we received and the minimal amount they're asking for here.
What was the amount? Peter, can you remind me?
So $25,000 for BMR.
No, no, no. What did we get from the CARES Act? Do we have allocated?
$288,000. We have about $250,000 left in this fiscal year that we haven't quite utilized. So this will eat up, you know, some amount of it.
$35,000-ish?
Yes, which I think is a fair and reasonable amount. I frankly don't know what we're going to need it for other ones.
And as far as the compliance of this funding, does it fall in the CARES Act? A list of compliant items that we can give to a regional school district and who would the vote?
So nobody's coming out and saying specifically no, nor are they specifically saying yes. But they are items that are... costs that are being incurred because of COVID-19. They're being incurred by regional schools, and who pays for them is up to the regional schools and the communities that might otherwise pick up the debt. So it's up to us, up to the town.
Do we happen to know what Blackstone has given to BBT? Just curious to see how the ratio falls with BMR?
Have you been watching anything about Blackstone CARES Act?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, I don't know what they gave, but they're being requested for the balance of BMR that they're requesting.
Right, I understand the BMR. I'm just curious to see what they gave BBT.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
So the other strategy approach, then I'd be less... I'd be less agreeable for more money.
What was that last part? You said less agreeable for more money what?
I said.
I still didn't catch it.
It's a modest amount now, and I think that's sufficient. I would say.
Okay, yeah. So I know that we asked as a board to approve this as a board, and not to have to leave it on the shoulders of Peter to decide on the amounts. So if anybody'd like to make a motion for these amounts for BMR and BBT, I'm looking... open it up to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allocate $8,500 from the CARES Act Fund for BBT for the request, and another $25,000 for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. One question. So, Peter, in your opinion, because you said it wasn't neither stated that this is what it can be used for, and that it is... they didn't say that it can't be used for that. So I'm just having trouble grasping, so.
Yeah, so it's my... you know, I tried to pin down the CARES Act liaison from the state as to whether this is good or bad. And the response is basically you can provide funds to regional schools, and the funds must qualify for CARES Act funding, and there's a specific list of these. These items would fall under. Take computers that BBT is requesting. We've submitted in the earlier tranche, the $38,000 for the period 3-1 through 6-30 that we had approved, we did include remote learning or equipment like what they're requesting. We did include for extra hours of work for people for town meeting, or extra hours for elections and that sort of thing. So that were, you know, it's a personnel cost that are incurred as a result of COVID-19, which what BMR is asking for, certainly.
And you don't know of any other towns that have done this or haven't done this?
I know that some of the BBT towns have already approved it. The doc... I think in the documentation, mentioned a couple of them, Dr. Fitzpatrick. As far as BMR, I know there's a commitment from Blackstone for the balance that the amount they're asking for in total.
That was all I had.
All right, looking for... all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, 5-0. All right, you can let them know, Peter. They'll be happy that we finally made an agreement on that.
Yep.
Okay, public forum. Tim, do we have anybody in the public forum?
At 10:30.
Well, we still have 16 people watching, so we can wait a minute, but Lisa is on now.
Is she able to... I heard a lot of feedback on there. Wasn't sure if it was...
I think it was just her ruffling them around. I just asked her to unmute.
Oh, okay.
And Lisa, you can press star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. So let's go back to Lisa's. No worries. Where was Lisa? Conduct discussion of performance matters of town treasurer collectors. Consideration of reappointment. At our last, not our last, one of our previous meetings, there was a reappointment held for treasurer collector. I don't remember who held it.
Me.
So now that Lisa's on, we can open this up to discussion here.
Yep, so... I would just like... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Lisa, please.
Okay, I would just like to read a short statement if I could, and then that's about all I really wanted to add to it.
One quick point of order. Is she going to be afforded the opportunity to go into executive session or open session? Because we are discussing a personal...
Yeah, we can...
This is not an executive session matter. Complaints allow you to go into executive session. This session of performance is done in a public meeting. So that's what we're... we consult with council, yeah.
Lisa, you want to read your note?
Yeah, just a short statement. Thank you. At the Monday, August 17th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen, my FY '21 appointments as treasurer collector and custodian of tax titles were held, and no vote was taken. The reasons given were possible complaints that had been made about me and performance issues. Since I was not present at the meeting, the discussion was held over until the September 8th meeting. I continued to work in a holdover position. Since that meeting, I have been told that there are no written complaints about me. The August 17th Selectmen's meeting was the first time I had heard that there were questions about my performance. I asked the Assistant Collector Treasurer in writing for a copy of my personnel folder. The last time I was given a performance evaluation was in 2015. There are no letters or statements in my file from anyone stating they have any performance issues. I am extremely accessible and in the office most weeks, Monday through Friday. I would have welcomed the chance to sit down and discuss Mrs. Gill's concern. If any member of the Board of Selectmen felt that I had a performance issue, I would have made myself available to meet with them at any time. The personnel bylaw states that a reasonable effort shall be made to assist employees with inadequate performance. If for some reason one or more of you felt that my performance was lacking, I really should have been given the chance to address it before it was brought up at a meeting. I have been in a position for 15 years without any complaints being filed against me. In the last four to five years, we have had four different accountants. Turnover in that position is not easy to deal with. Fortunately, our present accountant has brought stability to the position. I think that he would agree that we work well together, and things are moving along at a good pace. We have a very small staff of dedicated people who work in the town hall. We try our very best to give the residents of Millville the best service that we can. We also work together as a team, trying to help the departments that are understaffed due to openings that have not been filled yet. In conclusion, as of today, I still not have been given any correspondence about the performance issues that Mrs. Gill referenced in the last September Selectmen's meeting. It's impossible to prepare to address them, since I do not know what they are, sincerely, Lisa Leroux, treasurer collector. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Selectmen Gill, would you like to speak on the hold?
Yeah, so I spoke about this with Peter, because it involves an incident that we normally discuss in executive session. So I'm not sure, Peter, when I spoke with you about this, I wasn't sure how to address it. Like, Peter knows what my concern is.
So I think the best way to put it is you have some concerns about matters that we cannot really discuss, because they are legal issues, but that the approval process that involved some of these things we cannot discuss in public session, that the treasurer was involved in the approval process. That led, I think that led you to some of your reservation on the appointment process the last time, but we couldn't talk about it without Lisa present, as of talking about performance issues. Is that a fair way to describe it, without really speaking of the matter?
Yes. So...
Is that your only... is that really the main reason you helped?
Yes, it is.
So all I will say on Lisa's behalf, and as she spoke about the tenant accountant, if I could, I would say that, yes, I think Eric's been helpful. Part of his role is to take some element of supervisory activities in the finance department. I mean, he's been working mostly with Lisa, and I would say that they are moving in the right direction. And I'm happy to hear that. I keep constantly asking about those. I think that, you know, we've been developing, working hard to develop Lisa's skill sets and capabilities beyond where they were, and I think they needed to be beyond where they were. So I'm seeing improvement, and I'm pleased with the improvement. And I'm pleased with some of the, you know, the progress will show in the greater timeliness of various things, like recording the free cash or end-of-year results and end-of-year auditable results and that sort of thing. So, you know, I think that's a fair statement, and I think Lisa's been ready, willing, and able to do a better job, or take on roles, or do things that she wasn't previously doing that might have been done by former town accountants when it really wasn't been the one.
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr. Furusso. Peter, would you say, like, I'm not in the office. You're working day-to-day with the staff there. Would it be your recommendation to reappoint or not to reappoint?
It would be my recommendation to reappoint. As I say, I think we're seeing continuing improvement in willingness to improve. And that said, as she pointed out, it's a very thinly-staffed place as it is. And I can't tell you all the things that Lisa probably does on the daily basis. So there's greater depth to what she does as it is, that I only look at certain things that are maybe more important to me, and I'm seeing improvement in those things.
And I would, going back to Lisa's point about not having a review since 2015, I would say, Peter, now that you've been there over a year, I will task you with getting the reviews of your staff up to date this year.
Yeah, no, I totally agree.
So I think that's important. I think that's... we're hearing that over and over with different positions, and I think we need to get that task complete this year.
Yep, no, and we're supposed to, by bylaw, do it every year. So I've seen that. I've identified the town's review materials, and so now I've got to get off my arse to do it for my direct reports and crew out.
Right, so.
Yep, so, and I guess, Peter, a question for you. Am I allowed to speak with Lisa about my concern? Like, there's all this cloak-and-dagger kind of hand-waving we're doing right now. Is our opportunity to speak with her privately and more openly, or no?
Yes, I think you can.
I could do that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Lisa, I will reach out to you, so we can speak more plainly.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, just send me an email. We'll meet with you anytime.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, if there's any... no other questions, comments, I would like to... go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say... sorry, what?
What were you going to say?
Okay. That, at this point, although we can't speak to it in any way, which is what it is, but I don't think that we can necessarily just turn a blind eye to this, that problem, as that was pretty, pretty large oversight. And I don't think that it should be just brushed aside. I don't think we should, by basically saying that, oh, it's okay, and we just reappoint, we're basically... by basically saying that, oh, it's okay, and we just repoint, we're basically giving a, turning a blind eye to, to large oversights that are, you know, when left unattended to, when left unsupervised, we see what happens. You know, so.
Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Caruso did talk about the skill set and the new supervision and things that are going on that are in place. Mrs. Gill's going to reach out and have a candid conversation with Mrs. Larue. So I think with Peter doing the yearly reviews and things of that, so I think we're going to address some of these issues, expect, you know, a certain level of performance. And then at that point, we can take action of whatever is needed, if needed. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, to the point about skills, she did say that she was there for fifteen years. So, I mean, at what point do you say the skill set is acquired? I mean, that was, that was, those are kind of rookie mistakes, I think. And they're big problems. It's not like a little thing, a little thing. These are big issues. And we are dealing with them.
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation that we have an executive session so we can talk as a board in depth and get the more details. I don't think we have full details. I think we kind of got an oversight of the process and the procedure that occurred. But I think I'd like to get some more details on that, Peter. We'll call an executive session on that particular item. And I think, I'm not sure if Lisa should be invited to that or not, depending on the topic of.
Why don't we, yeah, why don't, Madam Chair, why don't you and I determine that before setting the executive session?
Right, right, so we'll talk about that for the next. Yeah, because I think we do need some clarity around that. I don't think we went into very deep discussions on that exact process.
Right.
I remember in our executive session, we talked about it as a, on a high level. So I think we as a board need to get the exact details.
I agree. So do we want to, I think with this appointment, we just want to like leave it as is for now until that executive session?
Yeah, we can, we can have it as a whole for right now and just get some clarity around the issues that people may feel not so comfortable with. I think I trust Peter's recommendation. But I think if there's some questions that we want answered, we can do that as well.
So Lisa would remain in holdover status. And we'll deal with that in the executive session. I'll be seeing her hopefully tomorrow and talk briefly about what your level of concerns are and of course, selecting Gil. And that's with her as well.
Right.
Because those are valid concerns.
Right, okay. Anything else from anybody on this topic? Lisa, thank you for staying on so long tonight. All right, Peter will coordinate with you with next steps.
Yep.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow, Peter.
You bet, Lisa. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you, have a good night.
You too. All right, Tim, public forum, did anybody pipe up?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move on, selectmen reports, Andrew, you have an update for us?
I do, but we could table it just because of the lateness of the hour and because it might take some time.
Okay.
So I figure.
At ten forty, I'm agreeable to that.
It might take a little bit of time, so.
Okay, that's fine. Peter, town administrators update on?
Really fast, I'll talk really fast.
What'd you say, seventeen?
Seven items.
Okay.
Received the mass DEP report on the MES water. The operator's written a response. I'm going to review the response in the important detail and add my colorful response with it. So I may hold that for your next meeting. I did, I let them know that the thirty-day meter did not start until actually August one fourth when I officially received the report. Capitol Plains having a meeting, its first meeting of the new group on Thursday. We'll reorganize that meeting. CARES Act reporting for, we need to be going in, just to let you know. For the period March first through six-thirty-twenty, we have to get that in towards the end of the month. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting with the MECC. We're still not part of it yet. We're committed under the agreement. But we're not, we don't join until January first. But I should have a better sense of what's going on with state funding here, the issue that I raised last.
Okay.
Hopefully I'll learn more. I am looking at expanding town hall window hours a little bit further, so more to follow on that.
Peter?
Yes.
Just on that, on the window hours, are we considering hours like out, like after evening, like six to eight or something like that? I've.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I've heard, I've heard some folks, you know, talking about that. People are available to meet by appointment.
Oh, okay.
And and, you know, I recommend their emails and phone calls are also very good means of.
Yeah, we used to have the Wednesday night, six to eight, and then nobody was really showing up to, went to appointment only, and that seemed to be working.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
More to follow in terms of, I still want to try to keep the staffing alternating. So we're limited in the number of people in the building. Wednesdays, it gets very crowded. Audit, nothing to report. They had some guys in last week for a little more follow-up fieldwork. And the marijuana folks on the, who know, the company, I'll be sending them revisions to the HCA draft that they've commented on that protects the town. And then we'll see, maybe the next regularly scheduled meeting will have them in for you. And agreed upon draft HCA to consider signing off.
Okay.
So that's my report.
That's everything?
Yep.
That was fast.
Yep.
Do you have any items in the last forty-eight hours prior to the meeting that we need to discuss?
No, no, nothing significant.
Not at ten forty-one PM. Signatures, Peter, you're going to sign the MES boiler tank licenses? I will sign up on the meeting minutes. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, September twenty-first. And then, Tim, next Monday, seven PM? Are you available? Look at, I remember I asked Tim first.
Monday at seven?
Yes. Are you available?
I'm checking right now.
Okay, how about the board? Is everybody available?
I can do that, yeah.
Should be a quick meeting.
Seventeen?
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth. I'm not, but I'll get Jesse or Alex to do it. So you can schedule if you want.
Okay, sure.
Yep.
Yes, I think we're going to have to learn to live without Tim.
Yeah. He's trying to tell us something. All right, so next, we'll have a meeting Monday, the fourteenth, at seven PM. Basically, close out the warrant and discuss any items on that. All right, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right. Everybody have a good night, thank you. I'm going to rush you now. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.